The Hudson Board of Education for this evening, Tuesday, September 13, 2011. If you'll stand as you're able and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The agenda for this evening has one modification, and that would be in the Topics for Action, we are removing item number four in the Consent Agenda, which was going to be an approval of a policy on possession or use of weapons that will come back to the Board at our October meeting. So if there's someone on the Board who would be willing to move the agenda as modified...
So moved.
Motion by Brian.
There's motion like a year. Second.
Second by Dan. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. It is time for our Student and Staff Recognition. Sandy, we have a very exciting recognition this evening.
Yes, we do. We are so pleased to finally be able to present to you this evening our national NASA Award winners. We have five eighth graders, no, ninth graders, right? Five eighth graders last spring that did a water purification. They worked on it all year long, presented, and I had the opportunity on May 3rd to be a little mouse in the corner and observe their presentation, and it was outstanding. And then by the end of the month, they found out that they were the national champions, first-place winners. So I'm not going to take all of their glory. They've got a wonderful presentation to talk about their journey from the start of their study to their presentation, to their award actually being flown to NASA. And so, ladies, we'll let you come up, along with their outstanding teacher, Chris DeLeon, tech ed teacher at the middle school, who gives up lunch and after-school time to help these students get through this kind of project. So, take it away.
I'm Caitlin.
I'm Maeve.
I'm Amy.
And I'm Bree.
And Julia isn't here yet.
She's really close to the microphone.
Really close to the microphone, ladies. There you go.
This is our NASA Wilmar Water Purification Challenge Project. And Caitlin?
Our problem for this project was, how can we recycle and purify wastewater on the moon?
Our hypothesis was, if we recreate a naturally occurring biological water purification system, like those found here on Earth, then we will be able to recycle and purify wastewater on the moon.
The ingredients, we used the recipe for the NASA Wilmer Design Challenge, and we used ammonia, baking soda, table salt, vinegar, baby shampoo, and water.
In order to find a more efficient way to research water purification methods, we decided to split into different portions of our project into areas of specialty for each group member.
I became the algae pond biofilter specialist.
I, Bree, decided to research spirulina and algae.
I researched distillation.
Julia was activated charcoal or carbon filter consultant, and I chose the title of Lunar Living Conditions and Space Custom Analysis Expert, which is just kind of miscellaneous.
The first step in our project was that the wastewater had entered a sand gravel filter to begin the process of removing shampoo, baking soda, and any larger particles in the wastewater.
Next, the wastewater passed through an activated charcoal or charcoal filter, and this removed any last traces of the shampoo and baking soda in the water. This...
This is achieved by the water passing through the many small pores in the surface of the activated charcoal.
We had many different types of algae. We took algae out of our pond, our school pond, and we weren't quite sure what that algae was. We thought it was blue-green algae, but we also came across this edible algae. It's called spirulina, and, like I said, it's edible, so that was kind of a plus.
And the people at NASA said it didn't taste very good.
One of the many components in our algae pond biofilter was lava rocks, and we use them because they are very porous and they let water seep through. And sand was also used in it because it creates an ideal habitat for the microorganisms that we used.
Also, in the tank were several types of algae, including spirulina, the edible one, that doesn't taste very good. The algae... Oh, shit. Sorry, we got... Yes, okay. Sorry. The algae absorbs the nitrates, the nitrates that are currently in the water. The algae also helps scrub the air by removing carbon dioxide and releasing oxygen, which is what plants do, obviously, according to Caitlin, the authority in this area. Once the wastewater enters the biofilter, it takes only 24 hours before the wastewater is ready to proceed through the system.
Our next step is after the algae pond or biofilter, we filter the water once more through an activated charcoal filter, which removes any algae or any last traces of other contaminants from the wastewater.
Next, the wastewater passes through an Ehrlich Meyer flask. The heat is applied, and it starts the distillation process. The water boils, and it turns into steam. The steam rises and goes into a tube, and then next slide. And then it leads down the tubes. We drilled holes into the piece of wood. We spiraled a piece of tubing through it, and it cools it down.
And this is a picture of our entire project, which took about eight feet. It's pretty big and bulky, but it worked. Our Step 1A is a sand gravel filter.
Our Step 1B was the activated charcoal filter.
Step 2B is our algae pond biofilter.
Step... Step 2B is another activated charcoal filter.
Step 3A is distillation.
Step 3B was that condensation hose.
And finally, we have our clean water.
And here we are at the meatball.
It's called the meatball. Yeah. It's only called...
It's just the generic term for the big NASA symbol. They, there, all the employees call it the meatball, and I don't even think they explained why they call it that.
Why not?
But they do. Yeah, it's the meatball.
It's called that affectionately.
Yes.
And this was outside a building. I'm not sure which one, but headquarters, big, important building.
HQ.
And this is us in front of the launch pad. I'm not sure if it exists anymore, but it did then.
And we had to go through four security checkpoints, and it took a while to get there, and we still can't get past that barbed-wire fence in the picture that's kind of at the back.
It's also, like, electric. It's an electric fence?
Yeah. So don't try going in it. And, um, yeah, it got that close to it, but it was awesome to see history.
Oh, where are we here? This is the sticky pad room. Yeah, this is the, we dubbed it the sticky pad room because, well, a lot of rooms were like this, but when you walked into some of the rooms, this was where the satellite pieces were made, you had to walk across these really sticky pads of white something to clean your shoes off. Yep, and you could see your footprints. It was pretty cool because after you went over about three or four, then there was no more footprints. It was just kind of funny.
And this is just the generic, big, white room that you see in the pictures. It doesn't look very white, but it is.
Yeah, and, oh, if you go back, if you, it's kind of hard to see, but there's the Raffaello, and it was a part going to the International Space Station, and it's an Italian-American part, and there are three others. There's Leonardo, Donatello, and...
Raphael?
Yeah, the Raffaello, and one more that I can't remember.
Okay, so this is us inside the VAB, which is the Vehicle Assembly Building. This was really rare that we even got to go in, we even got to go into it. It's really big, and it was really cool, so we actually laid down on the floor and looked up.
You almost couldn't see the ceiling.
Yeah.
It was crazy. It's, it was really, the pictures can't even show how absolutely massive the place is.
Yeah, we got an offer to go up to one of the really high floors, but we couldn't go up, but it was a good idea.
They say that people who aren't afraid of heights freak out when they get to the top. When they are hiring someone, they do the white knuckle test.
If you grab, if you grab the railing and your knuckles, like, turn white, then they probably don't want to work the crane.
Yep. Oh, the crane operators, do you remember the test for the crane?
Yeah.
Yeah, they, you have, we asked them, yeah, we asked them if it was true that they had to use the crane to pick up a marker and draw an X on the top of an egg, and I believe at first they told us that was false, and then corrected us and said, "No, it's not an X, it's a dot." So I thought that was pretty impressive.
But they have computers, so they don't have to see all the way down.
These are like 20 to 40 stories up in the air, so that's pretty good. And they have to write their names on a piece of cardboard on a marker that's on a string, so pretty awesome.
Oh, yeah. What'd you say, guys? Caitlin? Oh, okay. This is the Shuttle Processing Building, and you probably can't tell, but we are underneath the Endeavor.
The Spaceship.
Yeah, the Spatial Endeavor, and, um, it, yeah, it had been spaced, so this was, and it was, um, it's much smaller than it looks in real life. I mean, it's massive. I thought it'd be like the size of an airplane or something. It looks bigger with the tanks next to it, but, I mean, it's really tall standing up.
And here's Julia. And if you notice, it looks like I'm wearing a garbage bag. I'm not. It's a jumpsuit, but I had holes in my jeans, so I had to wear that. It was the rules.
Yeah. Julia, talk. Just talk.
Okay, so those are some of the...
Those are some of the engines that they use for the rockets, and that is the Vehicle Assembly Building where they put the rockets together.
And we're viewing it from just a river or something that most people can't go on because it's a manatee place. We took a boat tour. It was pretty awesome. We saw dolphins.
And the boat was named after, was it some sort of, like, sheephead fish?
Yeah.
The scientific name. And I don't even think the researchers could pronounce it. It was like 14 syllables long.
If you can't tell, the girls are very excited about their trip, and they, really, they were on information overload. They literally got the Presidential Tour. It was the exact same tour that President Obama received when he went there, only without all the security. We didn't have any armed people following us around, although we passed plenty of guards. Well, this gentleman, Griffin Lund, these, the girls gave their presentation directly to NASA, to NASA scientists, and Mr. Lund, he's a chemical engineer, and he's actually working for NASA on water recovery. So all the wastewater on station or in the orbiter, he collects it or simulates it, as we did, and tries to purify it. And one of his comments that he, that the girls, that he gave the girls, and I have it typed up, so I can read it. He said, "This project and the apparatus you have built outclasses some senior engineering design projects that I have seen, college senior environmental design projects." So the girls received a very kind of, you know, not only are they doing middle school work, but, you know, well above the, what we normally expect, just kind of shows what middle school students are capable of. So anything you want to add to that, please?
Griffin was funny. We liked him.
Oh, and there was a quick video there. The video, NASA had a videographer following the girls around, and this is the result of that footage.
Astronauts must recycle water to live and work in space. Middle school students nationwide design recycling systems for NASA competition. This is the winning team.
We are Team Alpha Theta from Hudson, Wisconsin. Woo! I'm Julia.
I'm Brianna.
Amy.
Same.
Caitlin.
Just one more thing. Not, their, the awards for this team did not end there. The, was it K-11? Or, no, Channel 4 News, WCCO, did a story on them, their winning team, in May. A company, and I can't remember the name offhand, saw that their project involved algae as one of the components, and they contacted me and wanted to sponsor three of the team members to go to an Algae and Biomass Summit in Minneapolis, Minnesota, this October. And so, the entry to get in there, it was for adults, because this is mainly an industry conference, was $1,200 each. And as a student, the entry, the entry or the registration fee was very close to $400 each. And so, the company's paying for them to attend three days. They'll also present their project there, and they'll be able to have questions, answer questions from people who do this for a living. So it's really kind of neat, kind of an honor that these girls had, you know, being sought out by a different company rather than us seeking them. It was kind of neat.
Cool.
Congratulations. You young ladies have done some amazing work. It makes me want to ask what next. You don't have to answer that.
There's a possibility of going to Madison. We don't know for sure yet. And more science stuff. We like science.
All right. Well, thank you for presenting, and it is amazing work. Anybody else on the Board want to make a comment? No? All right.
Thank you. I didn't expect to say this, but a special thanks goes out to our mentor, Mr. DeLeon, and also to Mrs. Asmus. She went with us on our trip. That was very helpful. So thank you.
Next on the agenda is the Superintendent's Report, so I'll turn it over to Mary.
Thank you, President Barr. First, we'll move into information about our first day. We welcome to back approximately 5,500 students in K through 12. The information that you have before you is, whoops, it just changed for me, the numbers from the first day. So these are students who were in seats in each of our schools and had excused absences. These numbers are bound to change before our official enrollment on the third Friday in September, which happens to be this Friday, because we have to research and find out where some of the students are that we don't know yet. So again, we may have more students who register. We found that tends to occur after Labor Day, and then these numbers are very preliminary. So I would just caution us not to overanalyze these numbers at this time, and just see kind of the pattern that they indicate to us. And with that pattern, we see a small level of growth in the district, primarily at the middle school, certainly. And so, the middle school is our winner this year again with additional students, and that is very challenging to them because of the capacity of that building is 11,125 students, and that's with every seat full. So they continue to struggle with how many students are in the building. The elementary has a slight downturn again. This is preliminary, so we may see different numbers. And the high school really is stable and maintaining. Teachers and students, as the directors here, myself, went out to the buildings, certainly we saw a lot of excitement, enthusiasm, and energy in those first few days, coming back in our classroom, which was great to see. Nancy tells me that we have 83 bus routes this year, and certainly our provider Safeway is helping serve the district and our students as we move forward with the school year. So that's it for the first day, unless you have questions, I'll keep moving. All right. Moving on to Response to Intervention Coordination and Coordinator. As you know, we have a district goal this year to advance Response to Intervention, or RTI, and implementation of Positive Behavior Intervention and Supports PBIS. This is to foster greater pre-K through 12 learning, and that's a real significant piece. That's the reason for this, to foster learning success. This is a major effort in the district. RTI is mandated, and we have to be fully implemented by 2013, 14. This is a collaborative implementation effort. It's between all of our schools, learning services, and student services. It requires a significant level of leadership to move this forward, both administrative and teacher leadership. And to support this effort, we have created an RTI Coordinator position, and we have selected Jim Delune, Associate Principal at the middle school, to add this to his middle school responsibilities because of his areas of interest and expertise to support RTI and PBIS. Jim will report to Sandy in this, this level of responsibility, and the Board will take action later on in the agenda under the personnel report in the Consent Agenda. So if you have any questions about that? All right. And lastly, in my report, I certainly want to give credit and thanks to the generous gift of the Knights of Columbus. They have given $1,263.99 to be used for our students with disability and that program. And this is an annual contribution that we benefit from, or our students benefit, and that program benefits from every year, and certainly we thank the Knights of Columbus for continuing to support these students and their learning. And that would be my report.
All right. The next item on the agenda, then, is a report by Corey McIntyre on Special Education Identification Data.
Thank you. Tonight's my pleasure to share with you updated data on our district-wide Special Education Referrals and Placements. You can see the slide on the screen and on your, on your own screens. As the slide shows you, over the last two years, we've reduced the number of new referrals and new placements a little over 30%, and that is significant. That's an outstanding result of excellent work being done, really, across all of our departments, and is truly a team effort across all the work that's being done. You're probably wondering what causes this change to happen, and that's a great question. There's a number of reasons why we believe this is trending in the right direction. Most importantly, our students are more successful in the general program, and that's what we strive for. If you remember our SMART Goal results, we had 89% of our elementary students reading at or above grade level. We estimate that's about 160 students. And when you think about it that way, and couple that with fewer students being referred, it kind of goes hand in hand. Additional reasons include implementation of our HSD system for learning as it was intended with Fidelity. We have higher expectations for all of our students, so teachers are less likely to want to refer for special education help. Our increased staff collaboration has made a significant difference, being able to problem-solve together and work closely, hand in hand, has eliminated some of the need to refer students for special education services. The fidelity of our core program is very important, and that has made a big difference. We've also increased, as you've seen the last year or so, increased fairly dramatically the number of research-based interventions that we are using, and we've, we've really made an effort to trim out the ones that are not effective. That makes a big difference. We've streamlined some processes around the problem-solving teams, which we call student-support teams at the buildings. We've, we're using data very, you know, you see lots of data at each meeting. We're using the collection and analysis of that data more effectively to inform instruction and really make adjustments more rapidly and more quickly, which responds to learning needs much more, much faster than before. We've made huge commitments to staff development, focused, effective staff development, and really increased our capacity of our staff to be more effective, thus reducing the need for referrals. We've worked hard to reduce the paperwork of our special ed staff, allowing them to be more collaborative and focus more time on instruction and learning instead of the paperwork elements of the, of the jobs. And probably most importantly, we just, we really truly have a highly talented staff who are performing very, at very high levels, and that makes a very big difference to the work that's getting done. So we're getting great results at the same time while we've made budget reductions and savings to the special ed department area. Those are two really positive outcomes for the district, and, and we hope to continue this trend in the, in the same direction as we move forward, and keep collecting data this year and hopefully report back again next year with updates. So I'll entertain any questions you may have at this point.
All right. Looks like no questions. Corey, thank you. We are at the point of the agenda where we open it up to any citizens' requests to speak on non-agenda items. Diane, I assume there are none? And so, we are moving into Topics for Action. The first item in that section of the agenda is the 2011-12 Preliminary Budget. Tim?
Okay. You've got, in front of you, you've got the Proposed Budget, and on the first page is the breakdown by the various funds of the budget, and I'll just highlight some of the items. The first, first one is General Fund revenues, and as you can see, those are down substantially. That's due to the state cut in aid, or the estimated cut in aid, because these are estimated numbers right now, of about $2.5 million. And then other grants that have been eliminated or reduced at the state level. The Special Revenue Trust Fund holds, is a fund that holds our private grants, things like education foundation grants and other private contributions. The Special Education Fund operates, holds the operations for special education, and as you can see, that is going from about 7.9 million, or 8.3 million, down to 7.6 million budget to budget. Fund 38 is non-referendum debt service, and that is the qualified school construction bonds used for the addition to the middle school, and the $42,600 of revenue represents a rebate of interest. Those are, those are really interest-free bonds. We pay interest, but then they're rebated from the federal government, so that represents that rebate back. Fund 38 is a referendum which is approved debt service, and those are all past referendums and debt service on those past referendums. The reason we're going from $4.5 million in the previous budget to $14 million is you'll see on both the revenue side and the... is you'll see on both the revenue side and the expenditure side is really an accounting entry for the refinancing of bonds that you approved back in July. And that refinancing saved approximately a million sixty-four thousand dollars over the next five years for taxpayers. Fund forty-five is the qualified school construction bonds. Those hold the construction costs for the middle school addition. And again, related to fund thirty-eight. Yeah, the next fund is food service, child nutrition services. And that stands at revenue of two point three million. And again, that fund is not supported by local property tax. That's a fee for service and then some state and federal aids. Community service, the same thing. Fund eighty and eighty-one, community service and extended daycare, or extended school age care are again, are fee-generated programs. So there are no tax dollars, no local tax dollars supported there. And then the vocational or VoEd co-op, which is a partnership with Hudson, New Richmond, and St. Christ Central for the youth apprenticeship program. And we're the fiscal host for that program. Moving down to expenditures, you can see the expenditures for the general fund, which holds most of the operational costs of the district, are at forty million seven fifty-nine. That's a six point one three percent decrease over the ten-eleven budget. The special revenue trust fund, you can see on that one, we're actually spending more than we're taking in for the year. However, it's really due to timing of when revenues are received and when they're paid out. So we actually received those revenues in previous years, and now they're being expended in eleven, twelve. Fund twenty-seven, special education, again. That one is required to be fully balanced. And any overage from expenditures that aren't covered by grants and federal revenues are then picked up by the general fund. Fund thirty-eight, you can see debt service, again, that's payment on the qualified school construction bond for the interest expense. And then fund thirty-nine, again, I spoke to that one previously. And then capital projects, a small expenditure there. And food service, again, that is fully balanced. And community ed and extended daycare and school age care. And that fund is really recognized. We split it apart into two for internal purposes, but it's really one fund. And then at the end, the VoEd co-op, again, expenditures in that one self-balances. So in looking at the overall picture, really looking at the general fund, you'll see that the proposed budget of forty-eight million seven fifty-nine in revenues is fully balanced, forty-eight million seven fifty-nine in expenditures as well. Okay, moving on to the budget adoption and a little bit more of the detail. You can see the first line, two-ten taxes, those are property taxes. And the overall property taxes are proposed to be at an increase of one point ninety-eight percent this year. Last year, they were at zero. So you're looking at over the past, over the two years, you're looking at a little bit under a one percent increase per year. So moving down into the state sources, which is down at the middle, middle of the page, six-ten. Those are state aid categorical, those are some of the, you'll see that's dropped down from the three sixty-five down to three forty-three. And that's some transportation aids were cut, some library or media center aids were cut. And then moving down to the state aid general, you can see the reduction there. Again, the approximately ten percent reduction. Six-thirty, DPI special project grants has decreased from one twenty down to thirty thousand. And that mainly due to the loss of the STRIVE grant and the end of the funding for that program. And so that's, and I'll point out one thing. Under federal sources, seven-ten transit of aids, you'll see in nine-ten, we had a million two forty-five. Really what that is, is that was state stabilization revenue under the stimulus program. And the state chose to pay that out as part of an aid payment. So if you add the line six-twenty state aid and you add seven-ten together, those are the same, those are the dollars that replaced the reduction in state aids from the state in two thousand nine, two thousand ten. And then we've got the various categories of expenditures, starting towards the bottom of the page. Undifferentiated curriculum, that covers mainly K through five. And then we've got regular curriculum such as language arts, composition, computer science, et cetera. Vocational, which is business education, family and consumer ed, and so on and so forth. But you can see comparing eleven, twelve to ten-eleven budgets, those are, you know, all of those categories are down due to the different reductions and allocations that have taken place here. Again, I won't go into any great detail unless you have a specific question about a line item. But if you get down to the very bottom, again, forty-eight million seven fifty-nine are the total expenditures for the general fund. And then you can see the fund balance, which is projected to be at fifteen million nine fifty at the end of two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve, which if you compare it to two thousand nine, two thousand ten, it's about an eight hundred thousand dollar decrease in fund balance. Any questions on the general fund? Okay. Special, next section is special education and private grants. And so those two are combined together for reporting purposes. And again, you can see the decreases in expenditures there from eight point four million down to seven point seven million. Debt service, under debt service and revenues and other financing sources, that includes levy, local property tax, that'll be a four point three million dollars for debt service. And again, the refinancing, that's nine point six million dollars reflected as an expenditure and a revenue source. And then it's got a nice history of indebtedness at the end of each year. So our indebtedness at that point is twenty-nine million four fifteen. And if you remember, the statutory debt limit is ten percent of your equalized value. So we're under one percent of our equalized value. So well, well under in a very low debt service level. The next page, capital projects fund. Again, that fund is holding the expenditures for the middle school addition over nine-ten and ten-eleven. And then really very little activity for eleven, twelve. And then you can see the food service fund, community service. And again, that's both fund eighty and eighty-one, so community service and school age care. And then the package and cooperative, which is our youth apprenticeship program in partnership with New Richmond and St. Christ Central. And at the very bottom of the page, we report on our other post-employee benefits trust. And that's the trust activity down at the bottom. And then that balance has been dropping down. Two years ago, we had a little over a million dollars. We're spending that down. We've got about a half million dollar balance at the end of this year. Any questions on that page? Okay. The next section is historical valuation levy and mill rate, and then our preliminary estimates for two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve. And of course, these are estimates. We get the final state aid number in October and the final property valuations in October as well. You can see then, going down to the second to the bottom line on the middle of the page, under two thousand ten, two thousand eleven, we had the zero percent levy increase. And then for eleven, twelve, we're looking at valuation dropping about one point seven four percent. And the levy would be, would stand for the general fund at, or the total levy for general fund and debt service would stand at twenty-eight million three seventy-eight, which is a one point nine eight percent increase over last year. And then with the drop in value, it brings the mill rate to eight dollars and sixty-two cents, which is a three point seven nine percent change. And then the next section just gives you information on each taxing district. And again, the estimates of the changes in valuation for those districts. So in looking at that, you can see there's a very, very wide range of value change. We've got anywhere from an increase of almost two percent in the town of Hudson to a little over a twelve percent decrease in Troy Township. And then it works out to a little of one point seven four percent district, district-wide. And then you can see how that levy would be spread today if those numbers hold going into October. And then the last page is the proposed resolution that will be voted on by the residents tonight to set the tax levy. And that is twenty-eight million three seventy-eight, twenty-four million seventy-two eight oh seven for the general fund and four million three oh six zero eight zero for debt service fund. Any questions?
And President? Just, I'm curious, Tim, is there any kind of a theory based why the percent change in valuation varies so much across the taxing district?
You know, I think we've seen, if I remember correctly, sometimes there are timing differences. You may see, you may see one of the taxing districts drop down a value. And then if they drop down very far, sometimes you see a snap back up. And I don't know if that just is, you know, some of the assessment variations that happen. But yeah, I don't have any specific detail on any of those.
Okay, I'm just, I live in Troy, so you know, it's grim for me. So I was just curious why we're standing out like that.
I think Troy, if I remember right, Troy was, had, was just about even last year. And everybody else dropped down quite a bit. So now you're seeing Troy catch up a little bit.
Thank you.
No other questions for Tim? And I think we're looking for a motion to approve this preliminary budget, which will be presented at the annual meeting this evening.
So move?
Motion by Tom. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Lynn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item in topics for action, Nancy, we have a slate of items for our teacher handbook.
Right, we have seven new provisions. And after I highlight each one of them quickly, then I would ask that someone so inclined would make one motion to approve all of the provisions and moving forward on that. The first four have to do with employee compensation for extracurricular and extra-duty responsibilities. Non-athletic, athletic, other outside of the contract day services. And what is provided for you and recommended to you tonight are the same contract amounts and hourly pay rates as last year. The, some are based on contract language. Some are merely the past practice of the district. And some of the compensation is governed by employment law. And while all of the compensations are frozen this year, we plan to do a study to see what other districts are paying for these extracurricular and extra-duty services. And we will seek employee participation and input in that study. And we would then be coming back to the board in twenty, for two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, making some recommendations probably for changes also contingent on our financial condition. So what's presented here for the handbook is for two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve, for the first four of the provisions. Moving on to the compensation for educational advancement. Prior to moving into this new environment based on the new law, we of course had many teachers gaining educational credits and also, in numerous cases, obtaining advanced degrees with the anticipation that there would be some compensation in exchange for that. So this provision of the handbook is recommended to be implemented during this school year, two thousand eleven, twelve, and probably also continuing into the next school year. Again, as we continue to study other models of compensation, as we monitor what's going on at the state level because they're participating in some research and may come out with some mandates. We are recommending credit compensation similar to that which has been provided in the past. We are recommending benchmark and degree attainment, some measure of compensation associated with those benchmarks, and a little bit more if the individual has attained a degree. And the amount is going to be determined by the budget, actually in October, and by the number of people who would be eligible for this kind of advancement. And we would propose at this time to maintain the district's past practice of paying a stipend for the, those that are certified and have national board certification. The next provision is, relates to a probationary period for teachers, which is three years. This is the same as current practice. And this part of the handbook does contain some additional language about the value of this experience and the support that the school district provides during a teacher's probationary period. It does also include the district's authority to non-renew during this period of time without access to the grievance process. The last provision has to do with the school calendar and teacher contract days. This provision identifies the board as the body that establishes the school calendar with teacher input. The second section identifies teacher contract days. And we're proposing that the teacher contract days remain this year at a hundred and ninety-two, ninety, and a hundred and ninety-two for the probationary teachers for the two thousand eleven, twelve school year only. And we are recommending that those contract days increase to one hundred and ninety-two, one hundred and ninety-four for probationary teachers, beginning with the two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen school year. The, in line with that, student learning days would remain at one seventy-eight this school year and increase by two to one eighty days beginning the following school year. This proposal is the result of some research that we did and that we discussed and shared with the teacher advisory committee. And we are one of about six districts in our area that have, offer one hundred and seventy-eight days. The vast majority offer more than that. They offer, generally speaking, about a hundred and eighty days. There's a handful that offer one eighty-one, one eighty-two. So we had some general consensus about the need to increase the number of student learning days. The teacher's basic workday would remain the same in the handbook as it is now. And a change, again, discussed with the advisory committee, is that beginning this school year, that teachers would not be required to make up the first two inclement weather school closure days unless state law required the makeup of student learning time. And that would then continue into the following school year when we increase the number of student learning days and the number of teacher contract days. This recommendation does not include an increase in the teacher salaries. Okay? So I'll entertain any questions and then possibly if someone would be so inclined to make a motion on all seven of these provisions.
Other questions, Brian?
Thank you. The benchmark and degree attainment, how does that work? So what's the, what's the, what's the dollar amount for the credit? How's that work?
Well, Tim and I are going to partner on this. We don't know the dollar amount yet. Do you want to comment on that?
Sure.
And then I'll chime in.
Does it have a budget impact for this year, right?
Right, and what we've done is, we've got, we've got an amount in the budget that, as Nancy mentioned before, closely assimilates what we've, what we've used before. But it's going to really depend, this is a very different compensation structure than what we've had in the past. And it's, this is a transitional compensation structure. But what we do is we have to find out how many people have requests for credits and degree attainment. And then we take those dollars, again, assuming that our final aid numbers hold into October when the, when the state gives us our final aid number. Assuming that holds, then we take those dollars and allocate those out to those people to obtain those credits and degrees.
But the dollar amount's not specified in the handbook?
It's not specified in the handbook and it, of course, the following year, we may have a different compensation structure the following year as well. So it's purposefully not, not specified. Each year we have, each, each time that teachers have moved in educational compensation, we've had an average of about ninety teachers who were eligible for some level of compensation. And we, we won't have their transcripts until first part of October, and that's when the budget would be confirmed. And we'll put, we'll put the two together and then we'll calculate and divide that amount among the teachers that have earned that.
And is the, is it regard, is it, does it matter that I'm getting a degree in a subject I'm teaching, or is it, is that not in the handbook, or is there any, is there any preference given to, or correlation to the, I'm getting extra compensation because I'm, I have a advanced degree in a subject that I'm teaching? Or does it, right now, does that not cover that?
Well, the credits that teachers take, they apply for preapproval. So the credits are related to the subjects that they teach.
How about degree attainment?
And the degree attainment as well.
Okay, but in general, you know, I imagine eventually on the board, we're going to talk about the whole compensation and merit pay. There's a whole conversation I would like to have personally about compensation, you know, that we're not covering here. I imagine that will come up to the board at some time.
Yes, yes, and that, all of that is under study presently, and we'll be coming back to the board later.
And how long is this handbook, my last question, sorry. And how long is the handbook, what is the term of this handbook? Does it change every year?
It can change every year.
Can it change within a year?
We hope it won't, but we, it can. Yeah.
Can it be changed anytime?
It can be changed at any time.
Okay. Thank you, I am done.
All right, other questions for Nancy?
I have one.
Go ahead, Pat.
It can be changed from the board coming forth or from teachers coming forth and asking for.
Well, the administration, either way, you know, the administration could make a recommendation based on maybe some change in the law or something that we didn't anticipate that needs to be in place or communicated to employees. You could, you know, you could come forward as well. But we do hope, we are looking for some level of stability, you know, with these provisions as we bring them forward. But where we know that it's going to change the following year, we're telling you that because certain things are under study and we're in transition.
We're trying to make the handbook flexible enough that we can do two things. One, that we can clarify the expectations for employees so that they know what to expect and that we're not going to change it. But we're also, you know, during the year, we're also trying to give the board flexibility in the areas that we know are going to change. So for example, in this area, we talked about it being probably a two-year transition to a new salary structure. And that's what we were very clear with the teacher advisory committee as well. So we're trying to do both.
Nancy, I have one final question on the seven items that we're going to make a motion on this evening. Remind me of the process. All seven of these are items that you worked with the teacher advisory group, at least at some level?
Yes, at least at some level. Some extensively discussed, others informed that we were bringing it forward.
Right. All right. So if there are no other questions, is there someone who would be willing to make a motion to approve these seven items as additions to the teacher handbook?
Madam President? Thanks. I would move adoption of all provisions to the teacher's handbook as presented in topics fraction nine B.
All right, motion by Mark, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Brian, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And we are at the consent agenda section. And if there is someone who would be willing to move the consent agenda items along with the language for the dispersments for Mr. Erickson?
Madam President, I move that the Director of Financial Services be authorized to pay bills in the amount of one million seven hundred and forty-five thousand nine hundred and forty-four dollars and fifty-eight cents, as well as the remainder of the consent agenda.
All right, motion by Lynn, is there a second? Second by Brian, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried. Committee reports, we only have two for this evening. The first is personnel, Mark.
Thank you, Madam President. I think we probably covered, excuse me, covered everything here previously, but the personnel committee met on the twenty-second, discussed the revisions to the weapons policy as was discussed earlier, all the following items to the teacher's handbook, I should say the previous items to the teacher's handbook that we just approved, had an enrollment and staffing update, and discussed the school days and the inclement weather policy. And lastly, had a closed session to consider a confidential personnel matter.
All right, other questions for Mark? No. And the second committee report we have this evening is finance committee, Lynn?
Madam President, the finance committee met on August twenty-ninth. We adjourned a closed session to discuss the negotiation strategy with all union groups and to discuss compensation with all non-union employees. Also in that closed session, we discussed the purchase of public property. And we are working diligently to come forward with a viable opportunity to solve our, to begin to solve our secondary space issue, as Mary reviewed the enrollment numbers, which continue to rise. Next on the agenda for the finance committee was the two thousand ten and eleven update. The field work is complete, and as it sits right now, we are approximately two percent under budget on expenses. And then the remaining three items on our agenda dealt with preparing for the annual meeting. The committee reviewed the two thousand eleven, twelve preliminary budget and levy, which Tim reviewed earlier in this agenda. We discussed the fund balance designation and the possibility of designating a portion of the fund balance to six through twelve space for learning, and we prepared for the annual meeting.
Questions for Lynn? Hearing none. The last item on our agenda is a closed, a closed session. If there is someone who would be willing to make the motion to move to a closed session, reading the language on the agenda, please.
Madam President, I would move that the board adjourned a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes nineteen point eight-five, parent one, parent E, to consider the purchase of public property, and parent F for the purpose of preliminary consideration of a specific personnel issue, which if discussed in public would likely have a substantial adverse effect on the reputation of the employee involved.
Before, actually, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Lynn. Before we do a roll call vote, for those who have joined us this evening, there will be no action taken on the items we will discuss in closed session. However, we will return to the auditorium so that we can begin the annual meeting at seven o'clock. So with that, a roll call vote.
Bell aye.
Robson aye.
Holland aye.
Turner aye.
Van Loon an aye.
German aye.
Kaiser shot aye.
We adjourned a closed session, we will return before seven PM. Thank you.